We're going to call it over the Monday, November 10th, 2025 meeting, the Elletsville Town Council. Chief, care for the prayer?
Our happy Father, just one more time, we come before you to thank you for this little town that we serve. We thank you for our employees. We thank you for our supervisors. We ask you to be with us throughout this meeting. We ask you to say, do you sustain? Amen.
Chief, with fire?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call when you're ready.
Scott Owen.
Here.
Dan Swappert.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
Action to pay, I'm sorry, action to approve minutes from October 27th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Abstaining.
Action to pay accounts payable voucher and payroll vouchers.
Seven. Seven.
Motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Well, here's how it goes, ladies and gentlemen, there are no resolutions, there are no ordinances on first reading. There is one ordinance on second reading, which is ordinance 2025-25, creating a separate vehicle replacement fund for the Stormwater Utility.
Well, as I stated at the last meeting, it's a, um, a line that we want to establish for equipment replacement, be a non-reverting fund, and it will be driven by the rate. So, as rate pays come in, a portion of it will go back to safe for persons that can.
As I pointed out, we're actually, at this point, what it says, creating a separate vehicle replacement fund, it's actually creating a non-reverting fund.
Yes.
So the money can build in there, and that takes an action to counsel. Questions from counsel? You want to say anything about this? Motion from counsel?
I'm moved to pass ordinance 2025-25, creating a separate vehicle replacement fund for the Stormwater Utility.
Second.
Motion to second, roll call, please.
Scott Owen.
Yes.
Dan Swappert.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
There is no old business, and a new business tonight, one is Santa on Sale Street, September, December 13th, 2025, Saturday, September 13th.
I'll speak to it, I just wanted to let everybody know, Santa on Sale Street will be December 13th, from eight to 11. I think Santa arrives on a fire truck about 9:30, come in early and get breakfast buffet, and there'll be crafts. The library will be set up for a visit with Santa and friends, photos, toys, you can write a letter to North Pole if you need to, and we just want to encourage everybody to come down, it's great for the kids.
Outstanding. I understand you have other new business you want to talk about.
I do, I'm going to read a statement, I read the same statement at the RDC meeting, prior to this meeting. There is a chance to reorganize as a government unit, and the reorganization would be with Richland Township and the town of Elletsville. We'd like to explore a proposal to reorganize. And in a reorganized town, the two entities would become one. Reading off script, Richland Township and the town of Elletsville are exploring a proposal to formally reorganize into a single government entity. This proactive step would be part of a collaborative effort to protect essential public services, preserve local identity, and create a more efficient and sustainable structure for future growth for the entire township. Recent changes to state law, Senate Bill One, have placed increased pressure on rural townships and small towns to operate more efficiently with fewer resources. At the same time, there's a growing discussion at the state level about possible limiting township government altogether. The proposed reorganization allows Richland Township and Elletsville to take the lead in shaping their shared future, rather than reacting to outside decisions. This proposed reorganization would aim to give everyone, both in Richland Township and Elletsville, a shared voice to shape the community. Through reorganization, local leaders hope to preserve what makes this area special, while working smarter, planning more effectively, and building a stronger, more connected, reorganized town together.
Okay, thank you, I want to make one quick comment for clarification. This is not an annexation, this is a merger of the two governmental bodies.
Actually, it's a reorganization.
Reorganization, but I don't want people to think we're trying to annex the entire township. This is a proposed reorganization of both governmental bodies into one.
That's true, and to be more specific, this is a move to explore the proposal to reorganize. This is not to say we are going to reorganize. The exploration and the vetting of the process is first with culmination of then, after a reorganization committee and the subcommittees would form a plan that would be voted on by both the Township Advisory Board and the town of Elletsville Town Board. At that time, that plan would move to a referendum that would be voted on in November 2026 and become the new entity, January 1, 2027. There's a lot in what I just said.
Right.
And so there's a lot of questions, but at this point, I just came from a meeting with Advisory Board, and they voted to proceed with the exploration, and at this point, the process would be to explore, how it could be done, what it would cost, what's the implications. We have a meeting at 3 o'clock with Baker Tilly here, Advisory Board will be here, hopefully a couple of Town Board members can come. Lawyers will be here, and there'll be a lot of vetting of the physical aspects of the reorganization, and how it might better fortify the fire department, and allow for future economic development, and how the process would work, and exactly where the money comes from and how it falls into place, so. Questions?
No, but again, I just want to clarify one thing for everybody, because I know some people are going to hear a portion of what you said and be worried about it. This will go to the Township Advisory Board and this board, if we're going to move forward with moving it to a referendum. If it goes to a referendum, that means everybody in the township gets to vote on this.
Correct.
It is not simply the boards doing this, it is everyone in the township, the majority would have to approve it.
That's correct.
Questions from counsel?
For the general public that may have interest in Friday, right, it's going to be recorded, so that way people can start kind of hearing about what's going on financially.
Yes, we're going to put as much sunshine on this process as we can, beginning with Friday's event. We'll be, we haven't talked to Katz yet, but we'll record it ourselves if we have to, and then allow Katz to distribute it later. There will be tons of public meetings, we plan on having a, um, public education that will be direct to each household, as well as open houses on maybe every Friday in the morning for a couple hours. We'll have an open door to answer any and all questions.
I would also ask, maybe we have a couple late afternoon, early evening ones, because that's something.
We're going to mix it up, we're going to mix it up, so people are not left, people who have to work for a living are not left in the lurch, and so weekends, we, you know, plan on some, uh, open houses on Saturday, where people can come in, grieve, ask questions, critique, whatever it takes to get the public completely involved in this. This, Elletsville is in Richland Township, and this is a process where it will just become one entity.
And, just to be clear too, I think that, they've said it, but I'll say it again, this is just exploring the opportunity. We want what's best for the town residents, but I also want what's best for Richland Township, because they're kind of the greater, or greater, not Indianapolis, but Elletsville jurisdiction. They come here a lot, they use our facilities, and I want to show that there's a way you can expand without forcibly annexing people. We've not done it in the past, forcibly annexed, we have no plans to in the future. And if all this information comes back, and the Town Council and the Township Board say, this isn't going to be best for our residents, we're still going to part as friends. I mean, it's, it's not like the world ends, but this is needed to see if it, to get those numbers. And those numbers will come from the committees, not from, I mean, Baker and Tilly get you kind of a rough estimate, right?
No, we'll get a, actually, we'll finally have an exact estimate. The process will be a work session, and we'll use some scenarios to create answers to what happens if we do this, that, and the other.
But I'm saying, there may be some that we haven't considered, the subcommittees are going to say, how about we do this and that?
Well, that's true.
We're not going to be able to cover every scenario.
When the plan is, when the plan is complete, the physical plan will be complete as well.
Yes, but that requires.
And just so everybody knows, it's not an idea hatched locally. This was recommend, this has been recommended by some state-level entities, as well as our consultants mentioned that other people have done it, and this is not a first. And we're looking at the Sheridan, Town of Sheridan and the Adams Township consolidation that happened in 2024. It seems to be a good template for what we may or may not want to do. But this, everything that'll be decided will be decided by the reorganization committee and their subcommittees. This is not a dictate from one side or the other, and like I said, there'll be plenty of sunshine on this, and the township will be well represented. It'll, I mean, it's basically, we look at it as to be an even-sided representation.
And just for clarity, I think one of the things that drove this initial conversation is the state and the governor expressing a overwhelming desire to do away with township governments. So if that comes to pass, there are issues that are going to come about because of that, that hopefully this staves some of that off.
Yeah, I, yeah, and I wouldn't want to overstate that, but that is a true statement. And one of the things that really launched our interest about going through this process is the township currently with the town shares a fire department, and it's well-run, and we have good equipment and good people, and we, with SB1 and some of the revenue constraints in the future, we're looking at ways to fortify and maybe even enhance our fire protection.
Okay. Questions from counsel or comments?
So, what's going on this Friday?
The, I've asked Baker Tilly to start the process of going through the physical part of the project, of when we would consolidate, and I ask him, I give him several scenarios about some of the, some of the needs that we might have, whether it be equipment, or labor force, firefighters, police, et cetera. And I asked them to take that and look at the dwindling revenues that the township has, as well as the town, and how best to fit this proposal with the physical plan.
And what time is that?
3 o'clock, Friday afternoon.
And this is a public meeting?
Uh, it's supposed to be a work session, I, the Township Board is going to be there, I don't know how that's been arranged, but that's on their side, but I believe we, I can talk to our lawyer about how many of the Town Board members can be there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to have it a public meeting, because I don't want two or three council members to show up, we got to send one home. This is something that is going to affect all of us, it's a big decision, I want all of us to know what's going on at all times.
Yeah, we can arrange that in the future, but that won't happen on Friday.
Well, why won't it?
It could, it's a notice public, meaning it's a work session.
I don't know, can we?
Yeah, we can put a notice out.
Okay, then that's.
What do you, yeah.
And you can have a joint work session with another.
I didn't think we had enough time, two, three, one, two, three, okay.
Well, if we don't have enough time, then I suggest move it back, because this is something that I'm going to be very adamant on. I'd like to attend all these meetings, and I want all the information I can on it. I do not want to rely on someone telling me, so.
I'll see what we can do.
So if you, well, first off, I think we need to have a vote expressing our ability to either move forward with investigating the process or not. So is there a council member that wants to put forward a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to enter into agreement to look for, look at the facts for reorganization with the Township of Richland, and be able to start the process for assigning committees.
Can we amend that to the meetings being all public?
They all, by statute, they're all public.
Well, we're just talking about one for Friday, that we don't know if we can get or not, so.
But that's not part of the process for this.
It is part of the process, William.
No.
Yes, it is, we have to know all this information, and we're having a meeting on it Friday, so let's make it where all meetings are public, or.
That's fine.
Hang on, let's make my cut to the chase. Is there a second on William's motion? Okay, there's a motion, a second on that, there is now an amendment on the floor, Dan, you want to reword that?
That all the meetings will be held publicly, so more than two board members can attend. Anything that has to do with this should be public. Otherwise, I don't know how else we could have more than two board members.
Okay, well, hang on, back up, make it, make it as a motion, not as an argument.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure out.
Go ahead, do you want a second, I recognize him, let him talk?
Yeah, I just.
My only thing here, Dan, I'll be honest with you, is that some of this will be administrative between Baker Tilly and, that we don't need to come together on.
Right.
That we presented to us at a later point, so I can't, I don't say, you can say every meeting is going to be.
And that's why I was trying to talk it through.
Yeah, okay, so, think about it for a second.
What if you added this onto an agenda, making an agenda, update?
Hang on, Mike has an idea.
They're talking, I don't want.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so, if you would vote to restart the process, there'll be a reorganization committee chosen, and it'll be chosen by both boards. It'll be a seven-member board, and then they'll have subcommittees. There'll be times when they're working ad hoc, odd times. Sometimes they'll meet quickly because their other lives allow for it. So I don't, when you said all meetings, I would like you to.
Well, I just want to make sure, and this is something that we probably need Darla's input on, that if these committee meets, subcommittees, everything that is public, so that any board member can sit in the audience, or be part of, so that's what my goal is.
And I appreciate the goal, but as I said, not unlike what we do around here on a day-to-day basis. Sometimes the ability to meet happens when everybody can meet, or then all of a sudden they can't meet, and then, so it'll, the logistics of some of the smaller subcommittees, when you say all meetings, you put, you put a blanket over.
Well, and I, I appreciate all that, but this is something that we have never done before. This is very big, and personally, I've lived here my entire life, I want to be a part of it. And I'm sure there's other people that would too, so.
Well, maybe, maybe here's a good, good way to solve this problem, maybe we say they all have to be recorded. Even the, I mean.
Well, I mean, I don't see the problem of just having a meeting, I mean.
Here's the problem we have, and we can't tell another government entity what they have to do.
No, but we can make a schedule, just like we do our board meetings.
I think you're right, but we are, here we're not arguing that point, so, I'm sorry to phrase it this way. Here we're just saying, yes, you can move forward with beginning the process, which would include fixing meetings. So, this is kind of like step one of 400.
Right.
So, I think until we get to where we're forming, if we get that far, these exploratory committees to start going into point by point, then we could set meetings that have to be public. But this vote is only for, can Mike move forward in combination with leadership from the township to investigate whether this is feasible or not.
And I appreciate that, I really do, but you guys are kind of bypassing my point here. You did state earlier that the entire board would be here from the township, no different than us, we may all want to be here.
We're not arguing Friday's meeting.
And by all, we can't be here.
I'm not sure that's true.
But we're not arguing Friday's meeting, we have time to notice that, we just can't do the, in my opinion, we can't do every meeting is going to be public, because every meeting won't include us. It may include the Township Board.
But I don't see the problem with it being.
Because I don't know legally, we can tell the Township Board that it's a public meeting.
We can't with the township, can I chime in based on the Sheridan plan we're going? All the committees and subcommittees, they had a schedule when they meet. Two weeks before each meeting, postcards were sent out to every resident in the township saying the meeting on, as an example, public safety is this date, so they were public. They were all public meetings, very well advertised, not just a checkbox where you put it in the newspaper. And I think in talking to, you know, in, by hearing all the time, Mike, about we're going to follow the Sheridan plan for the most part, we'll be doing the same thing, so it's not like we're going to have one meeting, you know, they're going to have one meeting, but a lot of those, those subcommittees, I don't, I don't know if, I mean, we, I have no problem with, they're all going to be open to the public, but I see what you mean, if you have more than two of us there.
Right.
So I just think we take those on a case-by-case basis, and we can advertise that.
I'll, I'll go, I'll double down on trying to do what you're, to try to ensure your intent is taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, I want a guarantee, I don't want to hear, well, we didn't have enough time, and so this, this meeting wasn't open to the public, or only two board members can show up. I mean, this has got to be, and William stated that they did it, they sent it out every two weeks, that's a public meeting, that means all of us can attend.
But I don't think that, I don't think that.
I don't understand what the problem is.
I don't think that included all the subcommittee meetings.
This actually sounds like an issue for Darla.
And I said, I stated that earlier.
If you want to come back with that motion again, or if you want to.
But what about Friday's meeting?
Friday, well, Friday's meeting, we already discussed, he's going to notice it, so we can all be there. So Friday's meeting is taken care of.
I did not know the Advisory Board would be there, but I did invite them to at least send representatives, and they indicated they're all coming. That is, that is their decision.
And they will have to.
This was a meeting I was going to have if nobody showed up, because I need to, I need the physical, fiscal information just to decide if we want to go ahead, so.
Okay.
It's basically a fact-finding meeting.
And to be clear, that Friday meeting is not part of the legal process of what we're voting on today.
That's correct.
So, even if, even if this weren't, I mean, we wouldn't have it if this weren't on the, being entertained, but that's not one of the things we legally have to do, but we've taken care of that. You know, for the public, this is just kind of the first, we're finding out the information for the first time on some of the numbers too. This is a great meeting for people to look into, but they have to understand, these will not be the numbers that'll end up being approved. These are just rough drafts, because that's all going to be driven by the township and town residents that are in these subcommittees, and then brought back to the respective councils to vote on. And they might look a little different, so we, I just want to caution, if we see numbers Friday, we don't want to say this is what's going to happen, because we can't. The committees are going to decide that, and they're not even formed yet.
Okay, so.
So who's going to Friday?
To get, all of us can go Friday, because he's going to notice it as a council meeting, as a work session, sorry. Dan, I'm sorry, do you, do you still have an amendment motion on the table, and if so, what is it again, to make it a little clearer?
My motion would be, if I'm going to put it on there, that I want all meetings pertaining to this be public, so all five council members can attend if wanted.
Okay, so is that your motion now?
That's my motion.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so again, we're going to vote on the amendment, no, we have to vote on them primary first, then we'll vote on the amendment, okay?
I think you do them both together.
No, you have to do them separately, because it's an amendment.
I think you do the amendment first.
Do we do the amendment first?
I think so, because that may determine.
I'm fine if.
On how people vote.
Okay, that's fine, if we want to go that way, as long as we're all in agreement. So the amendment will go first for a roll call vote, and that is it all public, all these meetings involving this will be public, correct?
Hang on a second, sorry.
So you're just thinking this, in case any of these meetings that happen, all five of us could show up, and there not be a legal issue?
Exactly.
Okay, then we need to, instead of public meetings, advertise meetings, that was our friction. We need to have, because if they're public meetings, that doesn't mean all five of us can show up.
You see, that's why I needed Darla's, because I think if it is a public meeting, you can. Because like, we could all go to a Edgewood Band concert, be there, but we're not talking about the technical issues.
True, but I think this.
You may be right, I don't know.
Well, again, I think it's if we're participants in the meeting, where we're decision-making participants.
Yeah.
Then we have to have it noticed. If it's Edgewood Band, and we all show up, we're not making any decisions, we're not doing it in our capacity.
And the only thing I would say with that, ultimately, we will be making decisions on this.
Oh, I understand that, but I just want.
No, 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 not those individual micro decisions, so, just to maybe put it.
For a fact-finding, that's, you know, I don't want to participate in every meeting.
How about you put it, so, you make a motion, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but just trying to paraphrase it, maybe we can, a motion that we make it so all council members, all or none can, all council members are able to attend without violating quorum rules.
Right.
Is that, because that's the intention, the intent, right?
That's my intention.
Okay. And we can direct Darla to write ordinance.
Somebody put that in a motion, we can move on.
Well, I think the first motion covers it.
Okay, what was the first motion?
I don't even remember.
It was for public meetings, but, okay.
Public meetings, or that all five council members can attend, and this would probably help the township too, because I'm sure they're under the same regulations that we are.
They are, but we can't do anything related to.
No, but I'm just saying that this could help them too, if it is an advertised meeting.
No, because they have to notice it separately, just because we put out a meeting, it doesn't.
All right, I got you.
Okay, so your motion is that any meeting associated with this is a noticed council meeting?
Right.
Even the small committees where we're not.
Exactly, because I may want to come to a small committee, if there's something on there that I'm very concerned about, I may want to sit in and listen to it.
Okay.
Well, I might as well keep it as complicated as we can. So, isn't it normal practice for things like this, that because it's so hard to think everybody's ability to be at every meeting, especially when it comes down to subcommittee meetings, that the board appoints different people for different aspects of a project of this size?
Yeah, but that's true, Mike, but still, this is the thing, that if I'm not on that particular board, I still may want to sit out in the audience, and if we don't do it like this, I would not be allowed to be in here with three council members, because you could have public comment, or take anything from the public, and I wouldn't be allowed to say anything.
I don't know that that's necessarily true.
And this is why we need Darla.
You're right, but here's where I'm coming from. If all five of us wanted to go to a Bloomington City Council meeting together, we could do that, because we are not the ones in power in that making decisions. We are simply members of the audience, and if we want to expect, express that public comment, we could do that, just like going to Edgewood Band. If we go to a subcommittee meeting, if we're not the ones in power, we're just a audience member.
Right.
Then I don't think that kicks in. If however, what you're saying is that we're going to preside, five of us are going to preside over every one of these subcommittee meetings, that's just micromanaging, this thing.
I didn't get, that's not what he was.
No, but I'm saying, if that's how this is going forward, then.
No, that's not what I'm intending.
Okay, well, again, but that, that, to me, us noticing a council meeting puts us in charge of the meeting.
Say that again?
Us noticing that it's a council meeting, we would have to call the meeting to order, we would have to do our agenda, just like we do required legally, and that would, if nothing else, just by appearances, put us in charge of the meeting, because we would be the one calling it to order, we would be the one adjourning it. It wouldn't be a subcommittee meeting, it would be a council meeting where the subcommittee says, the floor is yours for however long.
Yeah, and I agree, this is getting way too complicated, and we need the attorneys for this.
Okay, so can.
I would just leave my amendment in there and second it, and she can look it over. If there's a problem, then we can address it later.
I can, I agree, we can open it back up to address that particular language, but I exactly see what you're saying. I have seen. I have seen advertisements, just to let you know, in the past, not here in Elletsville, but says, the, over the quorum or something of, members may be present but not participating in the, in the proceedings. But again, Dan's right, that's a Darla issue, but I'm not opposed to making a motion, they're all public meetings, because like I said, by statute, they have to be, so this just reiterates that to the public, swatches some concerns, and Darla can work out the, we can vote on the clear language of that part of it when she's back.
I agree, let's, let's go for it.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the table.
And a second, yeah.
And a second with that, so the amendment is that all meetings associated will be a noticed council meeting.
No, all meetings would be public.
Okay, well, that doesn't require a council meeting.
Well, that's why I got to, you know, I need to talk to the attorney and make sure...
Just because it's a public meeting, okay, I get where you're going, but...
And, and there's no sense us arguing it.
You're right, and Dan, I'm going to tell you upfront, I'm not arguing with you, I'm going to vote no on it, simply because what we're trying to do, I get what you're trying to do, and I agree with it, doesn't require the council to be in charge of it, and that's the fear that this is overly complicating it from the get-go. If we want to come back and restrict it with Darla's tutelage, I'm, more, more power to us, let's do that. But because it's just so complicated, and I'm not sure it's needed, that's why I'm going to wind up voting no.
Well, and, and to be honest, I think that would look good to the public, too, if we make this, all meetings are a public meeting, so they can attend, because I'm sure there's some, some people out there that want to hear this, too.
But again, I have no...
And see, and they may never show up.
I've got no qualms with that, and I think you're exactly correct, it should be, because the public should be involved, but the council shouldn't be in charge of every meeting, is why...
No, I'm, I'm not saying that.
Okay, well, to me, that's what the amendment means, so...
No, just public meetings.
Just don't be surprised if Darla comes back and says that's redundant, because the meeting is by statute.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's fine.
But either way, it's a good way to communicate to the public that we're going to make sure that's upheld.
Right.
Is there any further comment on the amendment only, that's what we're voting on first? Is there public comment on the amendment? Now we're back to council for a vote. So we want a roll call when you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
No.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pam Samples?
Yes.
Okay, so the amendment passes, now the initial motion was to approve...
An exploratory committee.
Allowing Mike to move forward with exploring the options.
Well, it would be with Mike, it would be allowing the town council and the township board to jointly explore reorganization.
All right, that motion is on the table and been seconded. Roll call when you're ready. I'm sorry, is there any public comment on this? Because it's so vital. Okay, now, go ahead.
I second it.
Thank you. Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pam Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That completes that, did you have anything else on any business?
No, well, yeah, I'd just like to thank, Friday night, we had an outage in town, I don't think, besides the people inside the outage, knew about it, we had to use police, fire, and DPW spearheaded the job, we repaired a 12-inch water main, and so I was just really impressed with the plan and how it was implemented, and definitely liked the end result, we, we had success, and we did it in the middle of the night, and I really appreciate how efficient and cooperative and collaborative all the departments are.
And I will say, I was part of the outage, and I loved it. You guys, I didn't even notice it until the next morning, it was, it was amazing. I mean, I wish we could always do things like that, but I understand, sometimes we can't, but...
Schedule me, Greg.
Yeah.
It's been suggested by...
Okay, moving on now to privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council not part of our normal agenda for this evening? No one rises in chambers, there is no one online that I see, we'll move now to supervisor comments, beginning with the town manager.
I have none.
No, thank you.
Jeff?
Deputy.
Deputy Chief?
I just wanted to let you guys know, if you haven't seen on Facebook, we will not be having a calendar made this year.
Thank God.
I had, yeah, people were really upset, they wanted to order our calendar, but you guys had zero, zero donors, so I said you could just Xerox it, but...
Oh, there's so much that I want to go down the road with, but we're not going to. On to you. Nothing from planning either? Anything from clerk's office?
No.
Okay, moving now to council comments, and I'd like to lead us off with congratulating the Elletsville marching Mustangs, four years in a row as state champions, just an absolutely incredible job by the kids, by Mr. Wells and his staff, it just, it doesn't get any better than that, it's just an incredible record of success, because not only put that, he's won, or they have won state for indoor percussion, which happens in the winter, multiple state championships in the last four years. So again, that's just a program that does nothing but succeed, and really, really helps the kids out, and the kids put in an entirely awesome amount of work, that if you don't know what goes into that, you need to go see it. So, again, thanks to them, and congratulations. Anyone else?
I always do, I'll say it again, I just want to thank Mike and the township board of Richland, this is probably the, the most historic and the biggest thing that Elletsville's considered in their history, I mean, and so definitely not taking it lightly, and if you're in the public, and you're one that, you know, you're concerned with this, or you like it or don't like it, we'll be giving you information on how to choose committee members and that, so we want to hear from you, because we do not want this to be decided by a small group and then rolled out. We have to make a campaign for Richland Township residents and the Town of Elletsville residents, that this is in their best interest, and that means, as Dan was saying, total transparency, and then the other thing is, we have to make sure it benefits both, and not one or the other. And so far, it's great that we're both looking to explore this, and we will be an unstoppable town, whatever the town's name is, because they can, that can be up for grabs, too, and you reorganization, but I just, I'm humbled to be part of this council that has been tasked with considering this, and I just want the public to know, we want to hear from you.
Anyone else? No further council comments, there's no further agenda items, this is my name's adjourned.